Good evening, the time is now 6:05 and we are going to call this board meeting to order. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Dr. Sims if you would lead us.
There is a pledge.
Oh.
The quote.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The imaginary flag. Is that me singing? Is it?
It wasn't.
I think it might have been. Okay. Mr. Kanata, if you would please call the roll for the last time before you're fired.
Here.
Mr. Gaddy.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Nease.
Here.
Ms. Parker.
Ms. Dees or Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Ms. Sanders Halloway.
Here.
Vice President.
Here.
Ms. Cora Rodriguez. Here. Thank you. Again, this time we can say it's me. We can say it's me for the last time. For the last meeting. You have a special name. Wasn't there a pledge? No, I know. I just said I suppose it was just something. But this time one was to the one was not, right? He's just old. Pleasure. I just realized his name. Just a second. Okay. Got it. Got it. Okay. We could take a moment of meditation and to keep in our thoughts the family that lost those Thank you. Public participation, we have two people signed up, looks like they are signed up together. So if Lindsay Figueroa and Kathleen Ortiz would please come. Come down to the mic right there. Please state your name and your address for the record. Take that microphone right there.
Lindsay Figueroa, 129 Roslyn Drive, New Britain.
Kathleen Ortiz, 730 Farmington Ave., New Britain. So we were just here to discuss, we've heard some discussion about the closing of Hal's Academy, we just wanted to see where that stood and let you know how important it is to us and our kids to attend that school. So I don't know if you guys made any decisions about that yet, but...
So public participation, you are able to speak what is on your mind, but for, the way it works is that the board does not respond. What we can do though is if the item is on the agenda, we can brief you on it when it comes up. If it's not, then we will, we take your information and we can contact you afterwards.
Can I also say that I'm going to be holding that PTA meeting and if they would like to be part of that?
The PTA is the Community Forum at Lincoln or a different one?
No, a different one. We're going to schedule another one. No, I'll send out the date, but I have their email address.
So if you leave your email address with Mr. Kanata back there, there will be a PTA meeting scheduled to discuss those issues. We're also having a forum at Lincoln, a community forum, which would be another time to talk about these issues that are coming up with the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to address the board? Anyone else who would like to address the board? Last and final time, anyone else who would like to address the board? Thank you very much, public participation is closed. Thank you Alderman Rayers for coming and supporting us tonight. Superintendent report please.
Sure. I focused on two of our pillars tonight, one, I have to find mine, just an operations update which you can read through. I'm not going to go over too, too much. I gave you the highlights for just transportation, where we are, in terms of ridership audit and the new monitors and AP...
KPS?
Apps. I couldn't even think of that word. Apps that we have now for our families and for our schools. A safety update, our ALIS training, we only have three actually sites left to go this year. Mr. Halleck has mostly done them, Mr. Smedley has done a few, where they're going and doing hands-on simulation at stage three of the training. It was nice Homeland Security did come this past week at Slade and was very impressed with our proactive approach to what we're doing and they kind of want to partner with us to help out other people and, I don't know, we don't have that much staff, but anyway, that was a positive nod in our direction. I just gave, just for your review, you can see it's a one-pager, Mr. Prokop actually put out for our new copiers, going over to new copiers, and the savings is $100,000. So it's a significant savings that we've made as we look at each contract and go out to bid and try to improve. Our culinary stations are all set and ready, and the middle school, there was still some work to be done. I do want to, under the partnership update, you'll see there's, should have been highlighted for you, the darkest is red, and I'll go over it just a little bit. We conducted, the Search Institute Developmental Asset Survey was done in 2015 for our students in grade six through 12, and again now in 2018. And what it does is it measures through questioning the number of assets our students have, or the number of at-risk behaviors that they are engaging in. And I just gave you a quick one-and-done, I can go into more detail with the data. The first, the total points possible when the students take is 40 points. Students that report between 31 and 40 are more likely to avoid risk-taking behaviors. Anything below 31, we, there is more risk-taking behavior. Some, so, and I gave you just some of the really broad highlights from what we're finding. So our students, they decreased in the number of reported assets, which is not a good thing. You want them to increase in the number of assets that they have, which builds capacity and makes them stronger to avoid risk-taking behavior. You'll see a slight improvement, 45% of our middle school students reported 21 or more assets. That was in yellow because while it's an improvement over 2015, it's not where we want them to be minimally at 31. The same for our high school students, they went from, actually they went down, and that should be red, because in 2015, 41% of them had 21 or more assets, and now in 2018, they're reporting 38% having 21 or more. Some positive news is overall, all 30-day substance abuse, all of our substance abuse rates have decreased since 2015, alcohol, prescription drug, tobacco and marijuana, and the average number of students engaging in risk-taking behaviors decreased from 2015-18 in both middle and high school respondents. We have a long way to go, and this is not just a school-wide problem, this is a community problem, and so we partner with the Coalition. You know, we've been doing a lot to address this over the last three years in terms of health curricula at the middle school where there wasn't any, and start, I mean, some of the basics that weren't put in place, we now have in place. We're nowhere near ready, we're not done. We know that the number one factor for students coming to school is being engaged in their learning, and that's what we're really working on at NBU. Those are really the big highlights. I don't want to take too, too much time, but we are, I know Sujiro Lomoni is working, and Ryan Morgan-Langer are working with Charlotte Slitter, which is, was another family that lost their child in the Sandy Hook tragedy, to start with the Therapy Dog Program, full-time over at TC. The data supports, it's been very instrumental in reducing the number of restraints and seclusions that our struggling population has, and so we're looking to do more of that. And, just that we had a successful community forum, I think, two weeks ago. It was a snow night, and we still had, I thought, you know, I would say probably total 50 people, maybe more.
With everybody?
With everyone, maybe there was 50 or more. And I was really proud of the families that did come to the common council meeting last Tuesday, or Wednesday, or whenever it was, to speak, speak to the importance of some of the programming that we said we were going to cut. And I know, just hearing from a couple of older people saying that they, they presented facts, it wasn't, no, it wasn't dramatic, it wasn't dramatic, it was simply stating the facts of what they want as residents in New Britain, so, you know, that's, it's to empower our families to come out and advocate as a taxpayer and as a voter on what they want, not just here, but at the council meetings as well. And I'm going to say that's it. Any other questions you have on it, there's quite a bit there.
Good luck to our boys tonight, we're playing at 7 o'clock.
Yes, 7 o'clock.
In the gym. E.O. Smith, yes, their boy?
Yes.
TikTok, I know, I'm sorry. All right. Committee reports, let's see, Finance Committee?
We had a pretty busy meeting last Tuesday, a lot of it's on the consent agenda. Trust me that I did pick them apart before they made it to the consent agenda. We are taking in some donations, which is always good. We have two for donor's choice, one for $1,800 to Chamberlain School, and then one for the Keys Program for $1,500, and then Jefferson PTO or PTA, they raised $5,000 for Chromebooks. How cool is that for a PTA?
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Love it. That is it.
And then just to add to that, I was at the meeting as well, the pan out you just received, the devices to students ratio for Chromebooks by school, that was a request from your Financial Committee Chair, also just in support of the items on consent, so that you can see the Chromebooks, and now where we, where we are with how many Chromebooks we have by student.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can I take H off?
What, can you take H?
H off.
When we get to it, unless you'd like, I was just saying if there was something you wanted to add, but you can take H off, yes?
I don't.
Sure. All right. Finance Curriculum.
Our most recent curriculum meeting really just consisted of a bit of a presentation by Mr. David Sears regarding the renaming of certain courses at New Britain High School, not the content of the courses, but the names of them to fit within the catalog so that they sound like what people, what they are, and people understand what they are when they read them, and then also about looking at changing next year's schedule to an eight-period schedule rather than the current sort of T Shaw puzzle. And we just discussed the possibilities and implications of that.
Policy?
So policy, we have four policies or four recommendations coming forward to the board tonight, three for approval of revisions to policies, and one striking policy that is no longer really applicable or relevant as laws have changed. In addition, we also discussed, we received information from Dr. Tucker about how other districts do their hiring, because that's been something the superintendent brought forward as a concern, and we're going to make some revisions or some suggested revisions to our policies around that and bring them probably forward at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. And Personnel?
Personnel, I was actually not at the meeting, so sick, but I did read the minutes, and there are quite a few items that are under new business, and they're all being brought forward with the changes that were recommended in committee, so...
Mainly about adult education and the...
Yeah, the communication, the board for the Board of Ed.
Right, right. Wellness, has there been a wellness meeting?
There was. I don't think there was really anything report worthy.
Have you talked about the Search Institute?
Oh, they're, oh, I'm sorry.
The Search Institute, did they bring that up at all?
We didn't talk about the Search Institute, we talked about plans to do a wellness event in coordination with the V's at some point, but I don't think their plans are definite enough to, there's not a date or anything yet.
Okay. Old Business.
Freeze in here. Text Smedley, tell him to turn the heat up.
It's cold. All right. Can I have a motion for Old Business?
Oh, sorry.
No problem. I'll entertain a motion to approve the new policy 5144.1 with the use of physical force.
Motion. Sorry, did you want to go back to Board Report?
Who would I miss?
You did Committee.
So, oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I checked it before I did it, I was like, it's done, sorry.
That's okay.
My apologies. Board Reports, any Board Reports?
Oh, whoa.
Fancy that.
We're going to regret this decision.
Well, as we approach the uncertainty of the local budget, city level, state level, I've been seeing some social media ramp up, and I saw some concerns on how to address it, so I reached out to the young lady who's a high school graduate, still lives in town, very active young lady, world traveler, Alicia Strong is her name, and we had some discussions, and we thought it would be something that would be great to put together a solution-based education funding roundtable to consist of Superintendent, Mayor, Board Members, Council, and our entire state delegation to try and sit down and figure out what we are going to do moving forward, because we know there's an education gap, a funding gap that we are suffering here in New Britain. So we are going to try and get this put together before all budgets go into effect, so I just wanted to kind of make the board aware of that, and I think it would be a very unique opportunity to sit down and, again, solution-based, doesn't matter what happened, what brought us here, but what we're going to do moving forward. So I'm just excited that, you know, working with a young high, a former student who's very active in the community and very well-known by the way, I think it should be interesting, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes.
Last, two weeks ago, the legislature held a public hearing on a paid family leave bill, and one of our students and her mom came to testify, and she's a second grader at Holmes, and she stole the show. Both the chairs wanted to come out and have their pictures taken with her, she just did a wonderful job talking about her friend who got cancer and how her friend's parents, all the trouble they went with, went through, being able to care for her and not lose their jobs, and how sort of everybody had to rally around them, and how, what we really need is a system that gives people the security of knowing that if they're having a baby or if they're sick, or if they themselves are ill, that they have some job protection and a system to replace their income while they're not able to work.
Awesome.
Yeah, she was great.
Could we turn, we've invited her for our meeting already. After you sent me that email, we did invite her. She'll be here.
So we'll recognize her.
Sure. Matt, we can ask Matt.
We can ask Matt.
Next month. Thank you. Next month. Yeah.
Can I add one thing? In case you haven't seen it, I urge all board members, go on the New Britain Fire Department Facebook page, there was a lovely post yesterday about one of our students, nine years old, who was the first person to see that porch fire on Chestnut Street, ran home, told her parents, her parents called 911, and she said she knew what to do because when the firefighters came to school and gave their lessons, she remembered, and Chief Ortiz was pictured with her and called her a hero, it was really lovely.
That's awesome. Is that Facebook Fire?
New Britain Fire.
New Britain Fire, Facebook?
New Britain Fire, yeah, Facebook.
Loving it, our kids are so good.
I know.
I love it. Anybody else have anything?
Matt, we're going to miss you. That's my board report for today.
We are indeed.
We're going to miss you.
Yes.
I have others, but that's more important.
Take a moment of silence.
Moment of silence.
First we can fire him, then we can have a moment of silence.
Yeah, first I have to...
Yeah, that, that was sad, okay, thanks, thanks, yeah. Trying to, I'm actually in denial, I told him today, I asked him again today what his last day was, because I was pretending it wasn't. All right, on with the fun stuff.
Motion to approve new policy 5144.1, use of physical force, physical restraint exclusion, exclusionary timeout.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone have any burning questions or thoughts?
I have one question, and I don't know if we talked about it in policy, how many people are actually trained in the school, specifically New Britain High School, to actually act upon these, I don't want to say lack of restraints, just a different type of restraining measures that they have to implement? Do we know?
So how many people, staff are trained in de-escalation techniques?
Yeah.
You want to call Mr. Pierce?
Mr. Spalding.
Mr. Spalding, if you would come down to the microphone. And Mr. Pierce, if you would like to join him, that's fine too.
You don't have to answer today, but I would just be curious.
Well, I don't have, off the top of my head right now, I don't know the number. I know we, so all of our folks that are in our behavior programs, including the ABA classroom, and then the four or five behavior classrooms, four are externalized, and then there's one for internalized behavior, all of those folks should be trained, they, right now, we are in the process of recertifying some of them, so all, they have to be trained for the responsibility.
But I mean, not, the behavior classes, I would make the assumption that they are all trained, the ones that are, you know, one in the science, one in the English, amongst the floors, if a fight breaks out, there's only seven...
So we, so our paras that tend to be in inclusion settings are not necessarily trained in that, they can be, something we can look at, but they're not necessarily, it's part of that job, it's not usually necessary because they're there mostly for academic reasons, to support a child with whatever they're working on, so they wouldn't really need that. I don't believe any of the deans are, Mr. Pierce could speak to that, I don't believe so. So it would really be in those behavior classrooms.
Are security personnel?
Not to divulge.
Yes, there's a yes there.
Oh, I was just going to say, so we can get you the number, and we'll just give you a breakdown of staff that's trained.
Yeah, types of staff that should have that type of training, I'm sure you can get it for the next...
So we are doing, so we are doing a training on the 15th, Liz Rubiak is putting that together now, and so folks that need to be trained, we have a trainer who'll be coming in, even for some paras staff, we've offered the opportunity to come in, they were off that day because it's PD for teachers, so folks that want to come in and be trained during that time, that way we're not removing them out of the classroom, we'll be doing that on the 15th of March.
I'd also request, if possible, for the board just to get an update of, because I know it's something that we have to log, the number of incidents of seclusion restraints, but that broken down by school, if that's possible, one of our upcoming meetings.
We can do that, certainly. So all those reports come to me.
Yep.
And, and we analyze that data, we're looking at that, we're looking, so not only when that data comes in, I also, I read every one to make sure that they're in appropriate seclusion. So it's not like somebody just saying, oh, you know, someone, a student was mouthing off of being inappropriate and they were secluded, if it says that they were being unsafe, whatever, you have to delineate what exactly that means. What's unsafe to you may be different to, you know, for me, so we have to make sure we're basing on facts only, so that information is being broken down.
Excellent.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's it.
So we'll have that information for you.
Thank you very much.
That's the best way to say it, are, anybody who can do and does restrain knows about this policy and it will be...
Right.
Okay. And admins too.
Yes. Admins are trained, correct?
Depends.
I should see.
I was, I can't answer that, I was bullish.
Okay.
I don't want to speak and say, say all are, and then find out that a couple aren't.
Right.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
Motion to approve revised meeting schedule for the New Britain Board of Education for the remainder of the year, 2019.
Second.
All right, has everybody looked at it?
Yes.
Yeah, there was just a historical error, January and February were flipped.
Two states, right?
Just, it's historical, but we had, no, March, Slade and where we are now, we're flipped, so...
Oh, right. We were at Slade last time, weren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were at Slade.
We were at Slade.
Oh, and it's in the right month?
Yeah, last February.
Okay. Then it's fine.
And then Committee Meetings, or somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but the, the reason for the change was for the two committee meetings to meet at the end of the month so that we would have the information for sign-offs and for the beginning of the month. All hearts, minds clear on that one?
Yeah.
All right. Now I realize it's Monday to Monday, back to back now, but that's okay.
I know, sometimes.
Right, unless, right, unless there's an extra week somewhere. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. Okay. Consent agenda, I already heard H, any others? All right.
I know.
I know.
I do have an earache.
Checking for fever, I know. All right, can I have a motion for H?
A motion to approve purchase order for one Chromebook card at Holmes Elementary School.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yep. I don't, it's not that I have anything against Holmes getting a Chrome card, I'm just sort of wondering why Vance and Holmes are getting Chromebooks when DiLoreto's got the lowest rate of Chromebooks to kids, followed by Jefferson and Slade. Jefferson is getting a couple of Chromebooks, but DiLoreto and Slade are below the average there, and Vance and Gaffney are actually above the average, or yeah, Vance and Holmes.
All right. So if I may, to address this, first you're looking at just devices, not the age of devices. So we're trying to do two things here. First, the schools I'm isolating have the oldest Chromebooks in the fleet, and this is about the last year we're going to be able to use them for state testing, as well as the fact, of course, as a DiLoreto parent, I'm well aware, that, but to add, they have grant monies that we are going to make another purchase towards summer to get their ratio up, so that's the bigger game plan behind them.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yeah, it's like, though, all right. We don't, we don't have any fixed addresses, I should know, but...
Oh, yes, I hope so. No, it's...
Okay.
We are going to take that.
Yes, I was just, yes, I was just looking to make sure I wasn't leading to look out to the audience to find someone. Thank you.
Were you going to do that, the end or towards the front?
It's probably better to do it towards the end so people don't have to wait for us.
Okay.
All right. District-wide calendar 2019-2020.
Motion to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
I know.
Hang on, right, hang on, everybody look. Check to see...
If Eid is...
On there?
Well, I know it's not on there, I'm just...
What, on there? We never know. Eid?
Eid, but you can look it up on Google.
It's just, it changes by 11 days every day. No, it's not that we should have a holiday, it's just that we should make sure it's not like testing is right in the middle of parent conference.
Right, 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 there's parent conferences and something else, those, everything. Can we, can somebody ask Google?
It's in, May, this year.
Thank you.
April.
Nick is on it.
Give me that, sorry.
Well, and then there's one in like August, September.
The one connected to Ramadan is the one that's most important.
Or at least the one that would, we conflict with, tend to conflict with.
Thursday, July...
Right.
Thursday, July 30th for Eid.
Yeah.
Look at the Ramadan.
Eid al-Adha.
I was going to say it's Ramadan.
You're right, there are two Eids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
2019.
Yeah.
How much Ramadan?
For point of reference, we're looking for the date for Eid, so we're just checking to make sure that it is...
2020, actually. May 24th.
It's May 24th through the 23rd.
So it's 23rd through 24th, so Saturday into Sunday.
Perfect.
Perfect, okay.
Okay.
All right, so there's no testing happening that day, that's good. For the 2020?
Yeah.
Okay. Any others that we could think of? I know that was one. What about the professional development days, are there any full ones?
Yeah, there are full, yeah, there's, again, we're doing one in March.
Like this year?
Like this year. We have Election Day, which is in November.
Yeah.
That one we have off, we have the, up in the beginning of the year, August 26th through 29th.
So school starts on the 29th.
29th, so 26, 27, 28 is PD, kids come in on the 29th, 30th, so we're kind of staggering again, two days, three days.
Yeah.
Two days, four days. And then five days.
Right, Christmas is there, where is the King's Day?
It's Monday.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
Monday is off.
It's the 6th, yeah.
But why is, I'm just looking at the little key.
Yeah.
So it's, if it's in the dark.
It's PD.
It's PD, but that's not PD.
No, that's a, that's a holiday.
The color's not showing.
That's a good question, why is that?
He has a color one, here we go. One that's.
Yeah, it just seems like the way it's boxed off is not right for what it is.
Should be a PD day. That's, yeah.
It looks like it's all PD.
Christmas through, so there's, the first is a holiday, right? And then it's, they're off the second, third, and then into the sixth. The squares on the, what is it?
It's the section, the no school for students is, there's no box around it, and that's what it is on the calendar.
Right.
Oh.
So the January 6th key.
Got it. So if you look at the calendar key, it, there is a box, but it's saying those two things are the box, so.
Hey, Matt, the, on the, the calendar, in the calendar key, next to no school for students, there should be a light box, and it's, there's nothing there? Okay.
Because it's professional development and no school for students are this, are the same markings.
One is a bold box and the other's a light box.
Right, and so the January 6th, on January 6th, where is a dark box, it's to be made to a light box.
Got it. Well, those are PDs, are they? Because they're the same.
Oh, yeah, maybe you're right.
They're the same, it's just boxes.
That's thicker, I don't know.
I know, it's.
I don't know if it's.
It just doesn't look like I can follow the key, and then that is not what I expect.
Right. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I see what happened here.
You see it?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So it's two weeks off for Christmas. People will like that. It's just easier than trying to come back, it's good for, well, true, but it's, it's better for attendance than trying to come back for a day and then going back out, that's just silly. All right. Approve or strike policies, here we go. Alan, entertain a motion. No, I guess, you want to go separately?
I thought say I'd entertain a first-read motion on all, all four of the policies since it's the first reading.
Second.
I don't know if there's any questions at this point, if board members have had a chance to look it over and have any questions, but just to give a very, you know, high, high level summary, we're just updating our staff development policy, our drug education policy, and our students who are pregnant, married, and/or parents' policy to be more in line with current state law and guidelines, because the General Assembly has updated some of the requirements for staff development, et cetera, over the years, and our policy is just lagging a little bit behind. And then we're recommending that we strike the policy calling for equalized physical education and athletics for boys and girls, because there really is no need to have a standalone policy for that. It's all covered under Title IX. It's a policy that I think if we look at the actual draft, is from the mid 80s when it was approved.
Eighty-six, I think.
Yeah, eighty, yeah, eighty-five, eighty-six, so it's something that's just no longer, it doesn't need to be on our books anymore.
Any other? All right.
Motion postponed till our April meeting?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. So second reading it is. Okay. Alan, she had a motion to approve a contract with Castle Booze Associates in the amount of $410,000 to design and prepare bid documents for central warehouse and central kitchen facilities.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Absolutely.
Here we go, because you guys don't come to those meetings.
You got to start coming to finance meetings.
You can come to finance, definitely.
I think I will.
Because he went through the whole thing with.
Can I go first, or?
No, no, he, I was good, no.
No.
So I'm looking at the square footage of the project, renovate that, that building at Pulaski.
Right.
We're not tearing it down, right?
That's correct.
Can't.
So could you just tell me what this for, $1,000 in design fees is? It just sounds absolutely insane, but I couldn't be wrong. And I did miss the Friday speaking.
Well, we're over six million, we're over $6 million in estimated cost for, to build the central kitchen and the warehouse that they need. The warehouse itself is about $3 million, and the renovation and equipment that we're be putting in the, the central kitchen is another $3 million and change. Normally architectural fees are seven to eight percent of total project costs. We have a professional estimate on this project, we're a little over $6 million, we're at seven percent. So that puts you right at a customary fee for an architectural cost, for all the design work that needs to be completed in order to go out to bid, to build the road, to have access to the warehouse, build the platform for the warehouse, build the warehouse itself, install all the refrigeration and freezer equipment for the warehouse, and then renovate the building itself.
The warehouse is in addition to?
Two buildings, yeah, yeah. The warehouse and the renovation of the building itself.
Thank you, I missed that, and I just, I just caught it, I apologize.
No problem.
If I did, if I did my agenda further, I would have called you, but thank you. It does make more sense now.
Great, I just had a question too. Weren't we before talking about doing this at Smith?
No, we, yes, we were.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Way, way back.
Way back, yeah.
When we were asking the state to use the fund balance in the cafeteria, the state said you cannot build a new building for this facility. We had to use an existing building. You can buy equipment. So for the central warehouse, we're buying a refrigeration unit to put on a platform. So we're buying equipment, and then we're using the Pulaski portable building, and we're renovating it, we're not building a new building, we're renovating an existing. That's why we had to move from the Smith site over to the Pulaski site to achieve the same purpose.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Just another question, but worth stating again for the public record, the money for this project is coming out of the cafeteria fund, it is not coming out of local taxpayer dollars, it is funding that we have available from the school lunch program.
And can only be used for these.
And can only be used for things involving the cafeteria, food services, et cetera. So this, this building project, the construction, everything will be coming out of that pile of money, not, not state bonding, not anything like that.
Right.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, I think that that cafeteria fund has also done a lot of other improvements as well, and upgrades.
Yes. Refrigeration and things of that nature.
Quite a unique little tool for the district.
Yeah, and going forward in terms of cafeteria renovation and all of that, that's what we'll be looking at next.
Yes. Here we go. Approve, okay, here we go. Motion to approve the new stipend for CTE department head at New Bern High School?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
So I know I said it during personnel. My, the only issue I really have with these positions, being a stipended position is, stipended position is above and beyond your job. When you are department head, you are, your class load is taken down from, what, five to two? So you're really not going above and beyond your job.
It is too.
Because you're.
Department head is too.
Your, your caseload is, is down by three classes. That's all.
But it's different responsibilities for the contract that, that you sign to become a teacher.
Right, and I, I totally understand that, but that's why you're actually losing three classes. You're only teaching two classes instead of the five.
Mr. Pierce is shaking his head no, so.
Three?
Where, the, the positions that are being, the release for the department head are being gained, the lead teachers currently are released one period, so they only have four. There's three lead teachers, they will be teaching a full complement, so it's a, it's a wash in terms of availability.
Oh, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about the position itself. That position, that department head, they are the head of the department, but they're teaching less classes. Not, I'm not saying you're taking away from the students, but that teacher itself is take, is not teaching the same amount of classes, so having it be a stipend, which is extra money for going above and beyond your job. That's all. Oh, sorry, I thought I would be in love.
Sure.
Not with the band going.
Oh, because you're in the, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just, just for, you know, sake, sake of putting out there, there are other ways people, other ways department heads are structured in other districts, and sometimes it is that the teacher who is a department head is someone who carries an admin certificate, and they're paid.
Significantly higher, probably.
Well, they're paid point six teacher, point four, or they're admin. So I mean, the stipend, the stipend and the expectations in terms of, you know, curriculum writing, I, I do understand your argument, but I, I do think that the additional duties that a department head that is picking up are above and beyond the reduction of classes. That's, that would be the argument that I would make, saying that a small, you know.
I could probably see that, I could probably see that.
If you're talking about in a wash, right?
Right.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
We can agree to disagree.
We can agree to disagree, I'm okay with that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay, aye, me.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the proposed pay rate for the summer lead teacher?
Motion. Second.
All right. Discussion? None?
None.
Okay, I'm going to take it while I can get it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Beautiful. All right. Motion to approve the revised, can I have a motion to approve the revised description of the district coordinator of adult education?
Motion. Second.
All right. I just wanted to point out that there, the changes that were made to this job description were done so in alignment with the expectations of the state, and I want to give a shout out, they did a tremendous job with going through line by line and really making sure that everything that is happening there is featured there in the job description, so there's nothing that's kind of ambiguous, and then anything that wasn't being done was taken out.
It's a fair to say through G, H, I.
It's fair to say for yes. Would, I would take a motion to take them all together if anyone.
Because we really went through those.
All right. All right, so.
G through what?
G through.
We'll vote on, we'll vote on F, and then we'll take a motion for all those, and I will gladly let you read them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Beautiful, go ahead.
Oh, motion to approve HIJ.
G, don't forget G.
Oh, G, oh, G, sorry. GH, I, and J, these are all the new adult ed, they're not new positions, but they're revised positions.
Revised job descriptions.
Right, revised job descriptions, and we really went through them in personnel to make them match, like state regulations and, and verbiage.
So GH, I, and J, correct?
Yes.
All right. All those opposed, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
Motion to.
You can't motion to.
I can motion.
Not yet, we've got more.
No, no, I was going to say a motion to this position.
Go.
Motion to approve the new position request for the jo, and job description of communications specialist.
Second.
Discussion?
Just makes me sad, but no discussion.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
Yes, just like to make one change to it, you'll see a salary down there in that job description, communications specialist.
In the packet?
Yeah, and you'll also see this memo that I had, it's really just more informational purposes. I just want, just quickly, this, I don't want the board to take any action on this memo, but if you turn to page two in the memo, it says facility extends school hours, work-based learning, blah, blah, it is four position. I'm really making a suggestion here that all four of these positions have the same salary range, and that's the range I'm proposing for that position along with the other three, so that's the only change I'd like to make. So you'll see, I think you've seen that job description, it has a salary of 59 something, so I'm really saying the range would be 60,000, 657 to $70,000. It'll be a seven-step salary range, and two and a half percent per step. So that's, that's the only change I'm trying to make, and I'm trying to make it, have jobs here have consistent ranges with one another versus having four different ranges for four different jobs which are kind of comparable in salaries.
And they follow A-18, but they're not in A-18?
Yes.
Just for.
And they, all of them will be salary position, exempt positions, which means, you know, they're not hourly.
I was just going to say, do you have the salary in here, just because I.
Yeah, there's a salary that was listed in there, but I think it was a starting pay that I actually worked up at that two and a half percent range. I'm changing it slightly for that reason.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
So should we motion to amend the range?
Amend the rate, we can, as long as we're not motioning to amend all of these, that's fine.
Yeah, no, we're just motioning to amend the job description, that's fine. So I, per, per Mr. Kane's suggestion, I would motion that we amend the salary, section of salary benefits on page two, to read a salary range from 60, 66, 57 to 70,000.
Second.
This is for the communications specialist only, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't take all of these, it would just, this range would be for that position, listed for that position.
And that's if we adopt those ranges, though.
No, we don't have to adopt those ranges for that to be so on that one.
This is just for informational purposes.
Right.
No action, anything else.
Right, what I'm saying, but he just, we are going to adopt that range for this position when we haven't adopted the ranges at all.
Right.
So leave it, I would leave this position as is.
Perhaps I misunderstood, is this a current range?
No.
I'm making a recommendation for this position that follows that range that I have.
So the range that is in here, let me ask my question.
Got it, I got it.
The range that's listed in here is based on the current salary, salary range for the A-18 contract, correct?
No, it's a whole new range.
We asked Mr. Kane to provide this at the last meeting.
At personnel.
Because we didn't have anything concrete about, everybody was following different contracts, but nothing was in writing about what the actual ranges and midpoints would be, so he, he put this together from.
Last meeting, this position was posted, or proposed as an, as a non-exempt hourly position following another position, which was hourly. I was at, we decided to make an exempt position, so I was gonna come up with a salary range.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Yes, that's what we talked about in personnel.
Yep, yep, I'm good.
Okay, so do you, so the motion on the table is to use that salary range in that posting?
Right, in the job description.
In the job description. That is the motion on the table.
In the job description, the range? Do we usually put a range in the job description?
When you post it?
When you post it?
Dr. Tucker?
She's nodding.
Who's nodding?
Dr. Tucker is.
Okay.
I mean, most, I would, because then you know if you wanna apply or not.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion on the table is to have the range listed on the job description, which is also, would be part of the posting. That's the motion on the table. Yes, sir?
I just think, along with what Mr. Kane said, I think it's smart for us to start to bring some of our contracts more into alignment. You see, you see that in a lot of other organizations where you have certain classifications of job have a set salary range, and then you know that you're at least somewhat comparing apples to apples, and it gets us away from the one person making one amount, one person making another amount.
This is gonna be added for voting for the next one. We just asked it for personnel for this one.
Okay.
But this will be an action item on the next agenda. So now that you have it as point of reference, you can revert and have time to question it, but it'll be an action item for the next.
Right. Next meeting.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All those in favor for the job description as it stands?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? All right. Perfect. Next.
Motion to approve new position for clerk of the Board of Education slash talent office.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Anyone? This makes it a full-time position, half talent, half board clerk. The communications specialist would be totally separate, so this is taking the role of the board clerk, kind of bringing it back to halftime us and halftime talent. That's what this does.
Right. And Matt's position.
Is separate.
Well, no, but I mean, Matt's position, communications manager is not going to be, is not going to be filled.
Say that again?
Matt, the position of the communications manager is not going to be filled.
Correct, because then now the position is the communications specialist, correct.
Right, it's the specialist and the, Matt was doing both jobs.
Correct. He was doing both, and now, now the, the new, I'm not even gonna say, the new Matt, the new person will be.
Right. What happened?
Okay, yes, ready?
I, I think it's a good thing that we are looking to separate out sort of the board clerical duties and all of that away from the idea of having a communications specialist. When, when I first joined the board, I remember we had, I think, a halftime communications person, and there was a.
Halftime clerk.
Halftime clerk, but that person also did other things within the department, so kind of like this, where it was a full-time position split between two departments. And then we were fortunate enough to have someone who could successfully wear both hats, but it's very difficult, it's two very different skill sets between being someone who is a communications specialist and doing the media, and doing the clerking. Frankly, his clerking wasn't that great, but.
I had to fire him.
He was smiling way too much, so I had, no, I mean, he did an amazing job, and he did a lot, I think, to actually bring the position of board of education clerk forward into, you know, forward into the.
To 21st century.
Yeah, and the current technology and updating it, which it sorely needed. So I thank him for that, but I think now it's really a good time to sort of sever those two and have someone really dedicated to putting out all of the good things that are happening in the district, and all of the good things that are going on, and handling the communications for a district this large. Like I said, he's done amazing work, but there's, there's a lot more still to be done.
I agree.
I hope you have AAA, because I think I'm gonna hold on to your tires, just saying. All right, so, just saying.
Rough, rough. What did you say in the meeting the other day? You're dead to me.
Yeah. You're dead to me, that's all. Yikes. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All those signify by saying aye if you don't want Matt to leave.
Aye. Can't leave, sorry.
Sorry.
No.
Add this to the agenda, and then we'll hold on it, sorry.
Oh, motion to.
I didn't make it into the minutes, I don't know how.
I don't know. All right. Motion to approve the revised job description for the elementary education teacher.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. And we did change the certification numbers and all that good stuff.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you did bring those up.
Yes. Because apparently there are several. Who knew? All right. Any discussion? Questions, comments, concerns? No? All right. It's probably important that we have elementary education teacher job descriptions up to date.
Yes, good idea.
Good idea. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right. I'll adjourn to motion to approve the updated MOU with engaging schools.
Motion.
All right, discussion?
I think I'm confused. This is state grant, correct? And commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, and professional development, line 300?
See, the total is.
So just the highlighted, she's, just the highlighted is what is in, no, that can't be right either. Trista, do you want to take it? I'm confused over the numbers in the contract, I guess.
Right, so the.
Easily confused when it comes to numbers.
Right, the total amount that's on the financial information and the total amount on the invoice are two different numbers, so we're just trying to figure out what the.
Right, 34,000.
I just need to see that paper. It's the two things that say no current MOU if you add them.
Oh.
Right, but I'm there, right.
Okay, so, yeah, I can explain.
It's not have it in the.
15 in 1934, 615. I'm good.
You're all right?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just needed, you know.
Okay.
Brainiac over here.
Sure.
I'm good.
Okay.
That was a lot of numbers.
It is.
Right there.
Yeah, thank you, welcome to my world.
A lot of highlighted numbers.
If someone could just speak to why we're expanding our MOU with these partners, either you or.
Yeah, okay.
Whoever you want to speak to.
No, that's fine, Ms. Putnam can speak, why we expanded.
So as we have been moving along in our learning with the MBU and working with engaging schools, we saw that there were some needs in some areas and some places where we didn't quite need the support, so in looking at what we needed and what we could take, take away, we really felt that it was important to continue our work into the summer, you know, after the school year gets out, and really work with leadership and making sure that the leadership was getting specific professional development, but also adding a layer of teacher leaders into it, too, so that we could really build capacity, not only in our leaders, in our site-based leaders, but also in, in our teachers. So with that need came a revision of the MOUs and also an increase in a payment to them.
So for the secondary principal leadership sessions and the June Engage Classrooms Institute were the two that were in addition to?
That's right, were in addition to it, because we just felt that it was really important to continue building our leaders and also building capacity of our teachers as well at the same time.
Mr. Mercer?
Wouldn't it be more accurate to say it, because I'm looking at what the original MOU budget was, and the original budget was $770,000, and it looks like the new approved MOU total is going to be $684,000, so we're actually reducing the total cost.
So that's a great observation. So when we are looking at teachers coming in after the school year is out, we have to compensate in making sure that they get paid their time, so we want to make sure that we put some money aside in line 100 to pay our teachers their contractual, well, not contractual laws, but that stipend pay.
But it's, but I think the point is that the amount of money going to engaging schools is in total less.
Correct, absolutely, yes, it is correct.
I can prove this easily.
Yeah, paying less money than we thought, that is good, that is very good. It's almost $100,000, a little less than $100,000, I'm less. We like that.
Signify and say yes.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bueno, all right. We have to go into executive session, don't forget.
Before we do.
Sure.
Can I, motion to add a discussion item to the board really quickly regarding a five, regarding a five-year plan? Very quick, just, I want to have a preliminary discussion with the board.
Okay.
Tonight?
Very quick, very quick, promise.
It is 7:04.
Where's my?
Timer, three minutes?
Three minutes.
First we, okay, so that is the motion, somebody has the second, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Three minutes or less.
Three minutes or less.
Really, this just came out of the fact that there are a number of newer board members who I don't know if they've actually seen the superintendent's five-year plan as she's laid it out, and additionally, I think it's really important that the board have some action items, and when we look at our planning, how are, how is our work going to support a plan going five years out of the superintendent's plan, and having the board's plan become sort of the district plan for five years? It's something that has not really happened in my time on the board, and I think it's something a lot of towns do, and just something that we should maybe consider starting with, and an easy way to start would be having each of the committees.
Own a piece of it.
At their upcoming meeting, look at the superintendent's plan, and come up with ideas as to how they could support it, and then we can sort of revise and adopt that document as, as a full board. Something to help us hold ourselves accountable in our work as well. So that's just something I want to suggest, possibly if other committee chairs would be interested in doing that as well, just to help move us forward.
Yeah, sure. Just make sure somebody sends us.
Before we're the meeting.
Before the meeting, so. I'd ask Matt to do it, but.
Tell the new Matt.
The new Matt.